Still hard to get used to.
Yeah, I've been on the streets since... I was really bad addicted to drugs, cocaine, and PCP and other things. I lost track of everything. My kids. Lost my marriage, lost the house, lost the job. Sometimes it's amazing that there is hope. And I wasn't looking for it.
There is hope?
Yes.
The residents at the Pershing Apartments are getting a standing ovation. Like Garcia, many just moved into the 69 units.
For the first time in four years, everything that I own is in one location, under lock and key. And I hold the key.
Seventy-five percent of the units will go to homeless residents. The remaining 25% will be low-income apartments. These are more than just apartments. Mental and health services and career and lifestyle guidance are among the perks.
The days of putting people in apartments with no help? I hope it's done. We know what works is giving people a home and the help that they need to stay in that home.
There is a growing understanding that supportive housing is the solution to ending homelessness.
We have seen the population of homelessness increase dramatically. And we went from seeing a very isolated area to now tents all across downtown Los Angeles.
Garcia has managed to escape that fate. He is now studying real estate. And he reads inspirational books and goes to the gym in his spare time. One of the lucky residents who's found a place to call home at last. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The building that houses the Pershing Apartments was rehabbed with earth-friendly features and will be a LEED-certified building. Well, L.A. City Fire Crews head north near the Oregon border to battle a raging wildfire, one of a hundred or so burning throughout our western United States. Gil Reyes reports from Elysian Park.
L.A. City firefighters gear up for battle in unfamiliar territory hundreds of miles from home.
We'll get up there this evening. We'll bed down. We're planning on sleeping in tents and sleeping bags. And we'll wake up tomorrow morning about 5:00 a.m., go to the morning briefing and receive our orders.
In all, 22 L.A. City firefighters being deployed to the so-called Fork Complex Fire that is burning as of deadline time for this story in the Shasta Trinity National Forest west of Redding, California. These firefighters facing an uncertain future when they go up there. But then again, what else is new?
This is a totally different type of firefighting, first of all. In Southern California, our brush is... It's brush. It's the native vegetation of Southern California. They don't have the same type of vegetation in Northern California. These fires are in timber, in deep forests.
And that means limited visibility and the possibility of burning falling trees. The group is replacing another batch of L.A. City firefighters deployed to Northern California. They originally battled the Rocky Fire in Lake and Napa Counties, but were recently shifted to the Fork Complex Fire near Redding. These firefighters are headed there by bus, a 10-hour road trip. They're leaving their families for up to two weeks and will be working 12- to 24-hour shifts.
It's a mutual aid agreement that we have with the state of California. We're helping out right now. Who knows? Maybe later this year, we'll need some help.
Serving with courage, integrity, and pride wherever that may be. In Elysian Park, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The crew deployed up north are from city fire stations in Hollywood, North Hollywood, Pacoima, Granada Hills, and South L.A. Well, it's a chance to see firefighters in action and chow down on good food while supporting a great cause. The annual Hope for Firefighters fundraiser is on. Only this year, it's a little dry. Anna Marcos explains.
And the Hope for Firefighters fundraiser is off and running. A four-alarm success that's raking in tens of thousands of dollars. The 18th Annual Event was created to raise money for the Widows, Orphans, and Disabled Firemen's Fund.
I am here at lunch. I work at CBRE in downtown L.A. And I just wanted to be able to check out what was happening and to support the firefighters.
Each year, the fundraiser's muster games attract more than 5,000 people. This year, the 100-year-old fire carts and water buckets relay races are back. With one big change. In honor of the drought, not a drop of water is spilling.
We're not using any water. So what we do is we do part of what we used to do and then enact a bell ringing to signify the flow of water.
The food ranges from good old firefighter fare to Mexican to something called Spaceballs. We hear Oreo cookies are involved.
We've had a great time. We've sold over 500 Spaceballs to hungry people visiting here from downtown and the neighboring areas. We've had a great time.
Well, with Spaceballs to cap it off, lunch doesn't get any better than this. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
So far, the relief fund has raised $100,000. Well, you can't see it and you can't feel it, but that doesn't mean it's not there as city officials get ready for future disasters by embracing the latest technology. L.A. firefighters storm an office building in downtown L.A. as part of an earthquake drill. They're preparing for an emergency such as an earthquake or fire. And while firefighters are out in the field, city leaders are making sure they have all the proper tools they need as well. And one way they're doing that is by moving their emergency backup operations to the cloud.
So in case of a disaster, in case anything happens to our emergency operations center in downtown L.A., we can go ahead and run the very same capabilities from anytime, anywhere. And we're doing it for the safety and the care and the concern of our citizens.
This Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, in downtown L.A. is where city leaders gather during an emergency. A second location used to house the backup facility in case this one was damaged. But officials were able to leverage technology and move the software, hardware, and capabilities of the EOC into the cloud, eliminating the need for the backup facility.
We can set up an emergency operations center anytime, anywhere. And we're doing it based on us hosting all of this technology using cloud computing.
Officials say the cloud gives officials the ability to respond quickly from any remote location with a simple internet connection or satellite uplink.
By us being in the cloud, it gives us the flexibility, the agility. It gives us an opportunity to be truly expeditionary. We can perform our functions anywhere, anytime, anyplace.
And the best part, the technology in the cloud uses a pay-as-you-go model, meaning you only use what you need, cutting costs while increasing efficiencies.
We've searched far and wide. We looked around. We tried to build. We tried to adapt to different types of structures. Which one will survive and what will it survive? The cloud is the cloud.
Officials say they'll still be able to manage, coordinate, and assign first responders and do everything else just like before, only this time with a simple click of the mouse. And by the way, the Information Technology Agency which operates this station is up for a public cloud award from Amazon for the innovation. While the LAPD hopes new baseball cards with officers' photos on the back will give them a home-team advantage in community policing, Gil Reyes explains.
All of these are designed to build relationships in policing.
LAPD Chief Charlie Beck holding in his hand what he hopes will be a home run with L.A. Kids. Making a comeback this season after a long absence are these Tops Special Edition Dodgers Baseball Cards. On one side, a home-team hero like catcher A.J. Ellis. On the other side, his batting average, other stats, and a smiling photo of an LAPD or L.A. County Sheriff's official. The peace officer's patrol area is also printed, so is his or her personal quote. Back in the 1980s and 90s, officers would hand out these cards to excited kids on the street.
It became a time when they looked forward to seeing us instead of thinking otherwise. And every time you share a little piece of the human experience with somebody, every time you give them something, even if it's not significant, it is to them. And you break down barriers and you build relationships.
LAPD reservist and Valley Councilman Mitchell Englander holding a deck at this police commission meeting at Taft High School. Officials hope the cards will help kids become familiar with the officers who patrol their neighborhoods while building trust.
Now, obviously, baseball cards are not the only way you do that. But they are one way, and a pretty good way.
While on patrol, the LAPD and the L.A. County Sheriff's Department plan to hand out more than 1 million free baseball cards through October. Get yours soon before they're going, going, gone. In Woodland Hills, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
This marks the first season that L.A. County Sheriff's officials will be featured on the baseball cards. While city officials offer a reward to help track down a suspect who shot and killed a husband and father, Metropolitan Police Officers gear up for more patrols and the Greek Theater may be under new management. All these stories in City Beat. City and police officials announced a $50,000 reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person responsible for the April 19 shooting death of 41-year-old Juan Flores, who was gunned down in front of his house in southeast L.A. LAPD officials said Flores was shot about 2:30 a.m. on East 21st Street as he was parking his car. So far, investigators have little information on the suspect.
We're here to ask for the public's help in bringing some peace to this family so that they can try to regain some sense of normalcy.
He was a really, really nice husband. He was a nice father, and he always was there for us.
Anyone with information is urged to call the LAPD Newton Station homicide desk at 323-846-6556 or 877-LAPD247. The Los Angeles Police Department's Metropolitan Division A Platoon took part in its first roll call at Elysian Park Academy following the unit's expansion. This group of 60 officers were deployed to the Central Newton and Rampart Division to help patrol high-crime areas. Metropolitan officers go all over the city and are hand-selected for their maturity, connection to the community, and decision-making abilities. They also receive special training.
Their charge, their responsibility, is to leave a neighborhood in better condition than when they got there. And obviously, being deployed specifically where crime is occurring is our primary focus.
Los Angeles Recreation and Parks officials are recommending that a Pennsylvania-based event management company be given a city contract to manage the Greek Theater as an open venue. Recreation and Parks officials earlier this year had planned to award Live Nation an exclusive contract to manage and promote concerts at the outdoor Griffith Park performance venue. But that plan was derailed after Niederlander, the longstanding venue operator, mounted a campaign to override the decision. Recreation and Parks officials eventually opted against siding with either firm, deciding instead to have the city self-operate the venue with the help of a management consultant. The Department of Recreation and Parks, Michael Scholl, said that under this open-venue approach, the city would be able to keep more of the revenue generated by the theater. And as kids headed back to school, one student got a special lesson in kindness from a couple of LAPD officers who helped him get ready for his first day. That's the focus of this week in tweets.
He was on his way to school but couldn't tie his tie, so the 14-year-old flagged down two LAPD officers to help. And they did. LAPD Hollenbeck shared the photos taken by his mother tweeting, "A kind gesture goes a long way." Martin Beza at LAPD tweeted, "It's a simple act of kindness that means the most." This is what hashtag relationship policing looks like. Beza later tweeted another pic of the officer sitting with two younger boys posting, "Our story continues. Officers share their ties with siblings of the young man who needed assistance." And Robert Serta tweeted, "As it should, gentlemen. A community's officers should reflect its finest characters."
And that's a look at this week in tweets. While the L.A. Zoo is welcoming some late-spring babies, a litter of three endangered giant river otter pups is the latest addition to a growing brood. Anna Marcos takes a look at the young critters.
Here they come, slithering down their water slide. The endangered giant river otter is endangered no more, at least here at the L.A. Zoo. Not only was the first set of pups born last year at the new rainforest of the America's Habitat, but in March, another litter of pups, now just a few months old, came along, which brings the family to a grand total of seven, including mom and pop.
We really like coming to see them, and we love how they play and trip around. It's really fun for the kids to see.
The giant river otter is rare even in its own habitat, the Amazon rainforest. So two new litters here at the zoo is big news indeed.
There's not many of them left. It's very fragmented populations. Like a lot of animals, they come in conflict with humans. They're poached. They're hunted for their fur. And the habitat is being destroyed at an alarming rate.
Zookeepers were worried that the mother otter, who was hand-raised by zookeepers at the zoo, would not know how to do what comes naturally. But she's taken quite well to mothering.
She picks them up like a mother cat would pick up her kittens. She picks them up by the scruff of the neck and carries them in if it's time to come in. Or she'll sort of herd them out.
It's a family affair. Everyone takes care of everyone's brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles. So we have seven of them out there. So you come and you watch mom feeding them, dad teaching them how to swim.
The pups are now getting weaned off mother's milk and eating more fish. But in the wild, well, the diet can get wilder. Yep, don't let the cuteness fool you. They've got strong jaws. And it looks like these babies are ready to lose their baby teeth. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The rainforest of the America's Habitat, which houses the giant river otter, is also home to piranhas, monkeys, several species of birds, and the latest exhibit, the jaguar habitat. While tradition meets a bold new flavor as the 35th Annual Lotus Festival celebrates an ancient culture for the first time. Mongolian dancers put on a traditional dance for audience members during the 35th Annual Lotus Festival. It's the first time that the festival has celebrated the country of Mongolia, giving folks a chance to experience a new and rich culture.
The Lotus Festival is welcoming Mongolia and the music and arts of Mongolia, which the festival's never seen before.
Mongolian food, entertainment, and arts and crafts were on full display, as well as the stunning lotus flower, the star of the show.
It's a great festival we put on every year. It's in celebration of the lotus flower. And the lotus flower has a lot of significance, particularly in Asian culture. And in Echo Park Lake, there are a number of lotus beds that bloom at this time of year.
The lotus flower is significant to the Asian culture because it represents rebirth, purity, and life. And the exquisite plant certainly didn't disappoint, unleashing its vibrant beauty for those in attendance. Echo Park is experiencing its own rebirth after being shut down for renovations between 2011 and 2013. During that time, the Lotus Festival was put on hold. But now it's back to the delight of festivalgoers.
It's great. It's great weather. Lots of nice people, good exhibits and booths.
And by the looks of things, it appears Angelenos are certainly making the most of what the new and improved Echo Park Lake has to offer. The Department of Recreation and Parks and the members of the Council of Oriental Organizations started the Lotus Festival in 1972. While a musician brings his music to life through art, a play about love and deception with a twist, and pictures that look like the real thing, all this and this week's things to do. Following the tradition of great musicians who are also fine artists, singer and bandleader Louis Cruz Beltran brings his music to life on canvas with his first major art exhibit called Paint the Rhythm, named after his critically acclaimed recording. Like many other renowned musicians on the scene today, Louis expresses his inspirations and his rhythms via the art of painting. He was exposed to the hardships of the immigrant farmworkers at an early age, which inspired the stories he tells via his music and now his art. Louis is captivated with music, particularly the Afro-Cuban rhythms of Latin jazz as well as R&B and traditional rock and roll. Each of his 29 works has its own story, many of which he will share at his first exhibit on Saturday, August 29, at the MRG Fine Art Gallery in Sherman Oaks located at 13453 Ventura Boulevard. Seduction, money, and power are all on fine display in this bizarre 18th-century comedy of love and deception. A young girl dresses as a man to learn more about her husband-to-be and his true intentions. What she discovers bends everything from gender to her most cherished notions of love. It runs now through September 6 at the Odyssey Theater located at 2055 South Sepulveda Boulevard. Tickets range between $10 and $34. For more information, odysseetheater.com. Is there anything more personal, more elusive than what it is to be happy? The 2015 pageant of the Masters, The Pursuit of Happiness, will explore the many sources of happiness, both ancient and modern, through the theatrical production of living pictures. Go on a sentimental journey through depictions of pastimes and activities that gave people joy long before the instant gratification of the computer age. Discover artists who found their own answers to the age-old question, "What makes life worth living?" The 2015 pageant promises to be a breathtaking, playful, and joyous journey in search of that most mysterious of treasures. Check it out at Festival of the Arts at 650 Laguna Canyon Road in Laguna Beach. For more, visit FOAPOM.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana K. And from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, we're gonna start our council meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. If we can please take our seats so we can start our meeting. My mic is on. My switch is on, the mic is on. Are you ready? Thank you very much, I will repeat that again. Good morning, today is Tuesday, August 25th, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, and Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Correa, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Weston, thirteen members present, and Cora, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Buscayino moves, Councilmember Ofero seconds. Next item?
Commissioned resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Fuentes moves, Councilmember Price seconds. Next item?
Madam President, today is Tuesday, now be the time for the flag salute.
Thank you, can we all rise for the flag salute? Mr. Weezer, can you lead us in our flag salute, sir?
Thank you, Madam President, and if everyone in the chambers could please stand and put your hand on your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome back, I understand you went to China?
No, I don't mean to.
Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda, please.
Madam President, before we begin, there's requests to continue item five to September 1st.
Very well, we'll continue item five till September 1st.
Items one through four, items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items one A, B, G, K, and N may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Without objection, that will be the order. Any cards?
Cards on items one, two, three, and four.
Members, any specials? Open the roll.
Madam President, all items in that section have been held for cards.
All right, great, thank you. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen, thirteen eyes.
Am I having mic issues? Next item, Madam Clerk?
Items six through thirteen, items for public hearings have been held.
Members, any specials? Thirteen for Mr. Blumenfield. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item fourteen is an item for which a public hearing has been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Without objection, that item is bef—will be before us? Any cards?
Yes, there are cards on that item. Madam President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Very well, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm excited today to present to you the two-and-a-fifteen Nisei Week court, and also to celebrate the festivities that just happened here in Little Tokyo. This is one of Los Angeles's oldest ethnic festivities that continues to this day, and celebrates the diversity of this great city, and also celebrates the Japanese culture that has been with us for most of our time here in Los Angeles. It's their 75th anniversary, and my wife and I and several other Angelinos rode along the Nisei Week parade, the—two Sundays ago, actually. It was a great time when you see a lot of friends who have been there for decades, and new people who are discovering downtown Los Angeles and Little Tokyo. So I want to welcome the Nisei Week court to council chambers. We'll be introducing them in a minute. But we also want to welcome those who are here with the Nisei Week Foundation who put on this great festi—who put on this great festival each and every year. I want to thank President Terry Hara and the Foundation for their efforts. This is a nonprofit organization that aims to showcase the traditions and culture of the Japanese community through arts and cultural education. Members of the Foundation are all volunteers committed to their heritage and enriching the lives of those around them, so we certainly want to thank them. And it is hard to believe that this beloved festival started in Little Tokyo way back in 1934, but it's true, and today is one of the greatest continuing ethnic festivals, not only here in Los Angeles, but in the entire United States. Here in the city of Los Angeles, Japanese culture and history and its importance to our city is immeasurable, and nowhere is that more evident than in Little Tokyo. Our city's diversity is our strength, and in Little Tokyo, I remind folks, while the rest of downtown was waiting for a resurgence, Little Tokyo was one of our downtown communities that has thrived for many, many decades. And so with that, excuse me, I would like to introduce Queen Sarah Kuniko to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. My name is Sarah Kuniko Hutter, and I'm honored to be this year's Nisei Week Queen. With me today is First Princess Veronica Ota and Ms. Tomodachi Karen Mizoguchi. Although there are four other court members not with us today, on behalf of everyone, I would just like to thank all the council members and the city for their support of Nisei Week. This year's 75th Anniversary Festival just ended on Sunday, but we have a couple more events coming up this year. We have the Nisei Week Variety Show and the Fashion Show, so we hope to see you all there to support, and thank you again.
Thank you. So, thank you so much to our court, and at this time, I'd like to present a resul to thank the Nisei Week Foundation for all they do for our community, and wish them continued success. It's been 75 years, and that is a longstanding festival here. Little Tokyo and the Japanese community has been of great importance to the Los Angeles community, and we should continue to celebrate this festival, but many of the ethnic festivals we have here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations to Nisei Week. Wish I present this to the Queen?
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, congratulations, ladies. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item one.
Item one called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J Walsh Confidential, and for identifications purposes only, the son of a lifetime cab driver, a legal cab driver. This is an item one, public hearing, nuisance abatement. You do a good job on this. When you do a good job, I let you know, we let you know. And however, if you live west of La Brea, the landlords are allowed to do anything they want. If you live east of La Brea, they're tight on the landlords, for obvious reasons. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Arnoldo Gutierrez. Good morning, sir, you have two minutes.
Yes, good morning. I'd just like to request a continuation to give more time to Mr. Charles for looking into the papers that I submit that I've been paid for all those issues they say that was not paid. So whatever time he needs to look into it, I'm willing to give him.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you hold this item on the desk, please? One eye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Kristin Carlson.
Good morning.
Good morning. On this issue, we have—I've talked to Charles, and also, we were supposed to, since this is rescheduled from last time, we're supposed to be able to get in touch with the Department of Building and Safety about this, but we have not been able to receive any returned phone calls, though I've been leaving messages for over a month. These—this lien is related to two unpaid inspection fees from a few years ago, but it's for a business that we have no idea who it is. The business that we had rented to in that location was paying their annual fees, and so we have no idea what this is even regarding. It's a tiny lot, and we're just at least hoping to be able to speak to a— an inspector to find out who was even there. It was an adverse possession if this entity was even on the property. So I just don't know where—I suppose we could try to reschedule again, but if no one's going to call me back from Building and Safety, I don't know how we're going to get anywhere with this.
Ma'am, we have the department here, so if I can just ask you to come to the ropes, I'll have staff speak to you. This is one L, is that correct? Item one L?
Yes, I'm sorry, one L.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna have staff come and speak to you. Can we hold this item on the desk, Madam Clerk? So let's hold this on the desk till staff speaks to her. Thank you. Next speaker, Eric Previn.
Good morning, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And the item one P is actually item 15-0160-S54. A very interesting item. This one is on 11232 West Van Owen Street, and it's a lien for $22,541 against the resident—the property owner. Now, it's my understanding that this has been reduced substantially from $27,000, Mr. City Attorney. Is that possible? Is that—can that be confirmed? And first of all, it isn't my understanding—I'm reading this correctly, and if it is true, I think we should immediately stop what we're doing and look into this. Are they charging a late charge collection fee of 250%? It can't possibly be 250% above a basic inspection fee, can it? Because this is just—this is just assaulting the public members with these kinds of liens. I mean, I don't know anything about this. I'm sure this guy's happy to pay his $22,000 when he got a look at the $27,000, but honestly—and then when I brought to your attention, ma'am, as you recall just recently, that CVS had a giant lien in our district. They have three CVSs within basically 500 yards, ma'am, it's unbelievable. And then they are able to somehow push back and don't pay. I just think we need one standard, and I think that we need to look into other ways to generate revenue to help our communities than penalizing people like this with egregious escalations of penalty and fines. I mean, we do other things for different members of the community who play a different kind of game, and I think we should just do one thing, which is be fair and reasonable with the members of the public. So I really would ask you to look at this item closely. Thank you.
Next speaker, Arnold Sachs, item one.
Madam President, as he's coming, there's requests to continue item one P to September 8th.
Without objection?
Yes, thank you very much, Arnold Sachs. Very quickly for clarification, would the city attorney be involved in this compliance? Would they be taking these items to court for people not paying? Or is this just kept in-house with—the—because it's a municipal code? And is that a really a good use of city attorney forces? I mean, you have never had before you any violations for the nuisance abatement for foreclosed property at $1,000 a day. I think if you were involving the city attorney for problems that were violating city codes, when you could collect $1,000 fines a day against foreclosed properties that are in disrepair, that would be a much better use of city properties and, as the mayor wants, more qualified use of city time.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Next speaker, Minor Ventura. Minor Ventura? Go ahead, sir, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. I have a proposal for a lien on my property in Los Angeles. I made a payment of $256 back in 2012, and $550, and the codes have been corrected, and yet I'm now being billed over $3,000, and I just wanted to see if it can be reconsidered.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson. Sir, we're gonna have you come to the ropes, and staff's gonna speak to you. So let's hold this item on the desk, please.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we continue item one I for four weeks?
And that's until October 9th?
October 9th for item one I. Mr. Weezer?
Madam President, I'd like to request we continue item one L for two weeks.
Item one L for two weeks, Madam Clerk, without objection? Can we please ask our audience not to clap? Thank you. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, item one.
Yes, now we get to the money. Item one. All the gangsters in the hood, CD9 hood. See, I'm from the hood, and I'm wearing a hood. So now we gotta get all these liens on all these poor innocent homeowners. All these people here, look at this. All the poor areas, CD8, CD7, all the people who can least afford the money, 8 and 9, 15, it's always Watts. So you gotta stop this crap out there. Now we get CD2, that's ran by Paul Krikorian. We got so many liens here, we don't know. $22,541.33 on 1P. That's too much shit. That's too much money. How can you have a lien for $22,000 on 11232 West Van Owen Street? What the hell are they cleaning up? Are they rebuilding two houses on there? That's ridiculous. Then we got CD14, 602 North Rishon Road. No jobs in that neighborhood, lien $1,718. It's time for amnesty. Amnesty for homeowners on these liens. These liens need to be wiped out. Every one of them is unjustified. Every one of them is done to take homes away from innocent people and tenants. Vote no on 1, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O, P. Vote no on these fucking liens.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Spindler. Madam Clerk, there's been a request to continue item 1H for two weeks.
And also, Madam President, there's a request to continue item 1C to September 8th.
Without objection, let's vote on the remaining items. Open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item passes. Next item, Madam Clerk, let's go to item two.
Item two, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, item two.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is, this innocent-looking agenda item is the most important agenda item on this calendar. And believe me, you won't discuss it, because discussing it would expose you to an enormous amount of embarrassment. This concerns urban runoff pollution control. Now, we are about to have the rainiest season we've had El Nino in decades. Has there been any preparation? No. All you're doing is giving property owners exemptions. And when El Nino comes, and as happened last time we had El Nino, the water floods all the way right here across the street at City Hall to the steps of City Hall, you'll say, "Who knew? We didn't know? DWP did a great job? Hail DWP?" I'm telling you right now, we are in for a flood, sewer runoff, urban runoff pollution control nightmare. And all you're doing here is giving them exemptions. I challenge the press to do a story on how are we prepared? We know that the pipes down there, 80, 90, 100 years old. They're gonna fall apart, and the city is, and where's the mayor? He's with his boyfriend Glenn Dake. That's what he's with. And if I'm wrong about Glenn Dake, or anything I say, challenge me now. You've challenged me many times on unimportant items. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks, are you here? There you are.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And I really came up to speak about the part of this, about the storm runoff. I understand that the DWP is looking to initiate a new system to capture storm runoff. So what that means for this system, I don't know, per se. But if you're gonna capture storm runoff water, my concern here is with the delivery system. If you have a crappy delivery system that leaks like a sieve, as a good part of the DWP system does, then all the water that you capture as runoff is still gonna be delivered through the same system. So in essence, you're not really capturing any runoff, you're just paying money for nothing. I think you ought to take into account, somebody ought to look into the DWP and start to check on some of these systems for delivery of services before you decide what you want to capture for runoff. Because this paying out and paying out all the time just gets out of hand. And the same people that are making these decisions are pretty much sitting around a horseshoe. So if you had, if you have lousy storm runoff system, you'd hear about it. Water's flooding the streets. You're hearing about that when DWP pipes break, water flooding the streets. But yet, nobody is willing to do anything about it. Why not? You're planning on the Olympics. You're gonna do something for the Olympics, but you can't repair the streets, you can't repair the delivery system that make the city run. Why not? Oh, because the Olympics only come around every four year, or whatever, 20 years, and we can handle that. How can you handle that if you don't have a good delivery system? I know, because I've been coming down here, and I've seen the system, and I've heard the stories, and it's the same thing over and over again. Nobody takes anybody accountable for any of the problems that go on. Let's just have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Once again, the DWP criminal organization is on the control board. Look at all this crazy shit. MS4 permit. Is that because you gotta go to the MS13 to get this MS4 permit? Is that a Marasalbatruca 4 permit? Is that what that is? The fuck is an MS4 permit? Meet the requirements of the municipal separate stormwater permit. Just made up bullshit. Water falls, water drains, water goes into reservoirs in organized countries, but in the ghetto of Los Angeles, we have all the stormwater going to the fucking ocean and pollute it, instead of filtering it and recycling it. We have no policy for this. Vote no.
Madam Clerk, there are no more cards on item two. Let's open the row. Close the row. And tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item three.
Item three, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, item three.
John Walsh, tweeting at HollywoodDems. Again, this concerns Sewer Gate. You won't hear about Sewer Gate until the water is lapping onto the Times Mirror building. That's when you hear about, "We are not preparing for El Nino." There's no discussion of it at City Council. There's no discussion of the grandmother of all El Ninos, Super El Nino. That's not me, that's the weather person. And here, this is concerned a sanitary sewer easement, as opposed to what, a dirty sewer easement? In fact, what they're doing, when they say easement, that means you don't have to follow the rules. If you are a real estate developer, you can get cut all sorts of corners when it comes to sewers. We will see what happens at Sewer Gate. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Is Mr. Herman here?
Jose Weezer and his developers are into the sewer business here, I see. But how dare anyone from the city, especially an engineer, not get involved on the schemes and the scams of the city of Los Angeles for you taxpayers to waste your monies. But it's all right, folks. It's a part of a recycling system here. This is how it works. Ask the chimp monks on this side, and ask the meh eh 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 on the other side. This quorum is all about pay to play. Because if it was not the situation of today, as you all know, I am actually wearing a hootie, hootie-hoo, thanks to you Zuma dog for bringing to the attention that the public...
Sir, you're not on the subject. The item is number three, Mr. Herman. Item three. Item three, Mr. Herman.
So si se puede limpiar todos las preguntas en sección 50 números en la ciudad charter de die de lequisiciones a propaciones y estabiamentes de la ciudad owned operated east property as público street are ellis as Mr. Weezer in CD14. Aquí se fecha el cabrón, Jose Weezer. Aquí está el nombre. Cardor se quince, sería attorney. Si se risa, wey, si se risa. But let me finish now. Please, I suggest that we all stop the fraud and abuse by the city by taxing us on repairs of infrastructure in the city of Los Angeles, especially Herb Wesson.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Here we go again. Here we go. Paid for what? The bribe. But you gotta round it off, man. Round it off to the nearest dollar. Here, here's a half fucking dollar. Now, we got $6,870. See, you gotta round off your numbers, man, because it takes too much ink to print those extra two fucking cents there. Quitclaim deed. What is that? Nobody knows. A right of way. What's that? Nobody knows. A quitclaim of sanitary sewer easement, Lana Carewood Drive, had a handover drive. So the only thing we know, somebody paid the city council off and got something they wanted. There's your 50 cents. Hootie-hoo.
That concludes cards for item three. Madam Clerk, open the row. Close the row. And tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item passes. Let's go on to item number four.
Item four, call special for cards.
Arnold Sacks, item four. You pass. Mr. Sacks passes. There are no more cards on item four. Let's open the row. Close the row. And tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Item passes. Madam Clerk, let's go to item 14.
Item 14, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, item 14, and sir, you have one minute left.
One minute. Over a lifetime. Number 14, this again is final maps. Now, why would a final map mean anything to you people out there? Because the developers come in here before the final maps come here, and they upzone. In other words, where they couldn't build in the map you have now, especially in South LA, that's where they're after. That's because they can get cheap property there. Remember, white people want to take over the black people's neighborhood and turn it into west of La Brea type. So that's what's happening here. Final maps are being changed, and final maps are allowing huge, huge developments. And to quote a very famous black man, "Urban renewal means Negro removal." That was said 40 years ago, okay, by James Baldwin, and it hasn't changed since.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Sabah Wahid. Is that person here? Sabah Wahid, are you here?
I actually signed up for the TNC item number 13.
Oh, you filled out, okay. Thank you. Mr. Herman, item 14. Is Mr. Herman here?
But for one minute, I wanna talk this way, because this is...
Mr. Herman, item 14, your time is running out, sir.
I'm talking about final maps in the various council districts, not VD's, but various council districts, recommendations for council to approve the final maps and adopt the city engineer reports as detailed by John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org. Stay tuned. Again, council files including bonds, agreements, contracts, and other related fraud and abuse to the public as specified by zone changes. Didn't we do that with those zone changes for council districts? It's the same manipulation of facts. Listen to John Walsh, Hollywood Highland Dems. He's right, we're right, we win, you lose.
Next speaker, Eric Previn. On item 14.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn on the final maps in the various council districts. The council district I'm interested in is CD2, as I am a resident of that fine district. And what we have had in terms of adjustments to the council district map recently, as you know, in Coldwater Canyon, we have had a devastating DWP event a couple years ago, and followed by a lot of lobbying, and finally, a recommendation to put forward a giant parking structure with the skylights on top of a practice field on one side of Coldwater, in a green space. So this is extremely worrisome. Just down the street, we have approved, or in the process of, will be coming to this council under an astonishing amount of appeal. An item that is for a sportsman's landing. This is a group that's put together by Richard Weintrub and his team, and if you're wondering who those guys are, they've given prodigiously to Mr. Englander's campaign for county supervisor, which is nice. Of course, we are waiting for this 15-person body to hear that appeal, so hopefully he'll abstain from that one, along with the other people who have taken money from that group. But that's one of the issues. And then, of course, we have our lovely, what we have is a Witsit Golf and Tennis program, where we are holding off on, thanks to Mr. Krikorian and others, on a change there that would... would permit condominium to come in onto that open and green space. And finally, there's Prop K, which everybody adores, because it was voter-mandated expenditures for parks and rec. And we are just worried that our Beaman Park, which is due to get some money, is going to take on substantially more than we can handle in the form of a new facility, as opposed to the right kinds of facilities that would be drought-friendly, that would be sustainable, and that would continue to provide a good field for our... I'm sorry, sir?
Mr. Previn, you need to speak about the track map, which is item fourteen.
Well, that's, Beaman Park is right on our track map. You could see it very closely. In fact, it was identified during the Prop K item that came back a few weeks ago. So, we have a lot of activity. And finally, for the sale of the firehouse on Coldwater and Ventura, we took a $500,000 transfer to an NBC Universal-related fund in CD2.
He's still not talking about it.
And by the way, this is not in any way intended to be snarky, but there's money.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, Arnold Sachs, on item fourteen.
Good morning, Arnold Sachs. I understand that the Quimby fees are generated from buildings that are going to be developed into some kind of housing. So, just again, out of clarification, what about buildings that are going to be redeveloped? Would they also generate Quimby fees? I've read it a few times in the downtown news about the Parker Center and the use for the Parker Center, and I'm thinking, that'd be a great location for some low-income housing. You could just renovate it like they did the County Board of Administrative Building right here, diagonally across the street. They didn't tear it down, they renovated the building. And they're now using it for county offices again. You could renovate Parker Center into low-income housing for the neighborhood, because there is no low-income housing in downtown LA, and you could have affordable low-income housing. So again, I'm wondering, would that generate Quimby fees?
Next speaker, Mr. Wayne. Wayne Spindler, you have one minute, sir.
Okay, so seeing no other speakers on this item, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
I'd like to now recognize Councilmember Joe Busciano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Per the direction of Department of Building and Safety, we need to reconsider item 1D and continue it for two weeks after reconsider.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on 1D per Councilmember Joe Busciano. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
And that'll be continued, you said, two weeks?
Two weeks, yes.
Two weeks, without objection. That'll be the order. That'll take us to...
September eighth.
September eighth, okay. That'll be scheduled for September eighth. Next item, please.
Mr. President, at this time, would you like to go to general public comment?
We'll go ahead and do that now. No longer here? Okay. David Lieberman?
I live in Council District 13. Right now, Occidental Studios is a, the small production studio in the neighborhood, has commandeered two of our streets since January, preventing any parking in the neighborhood for those streets. It's bad enough that we have to play car boogie when it comes to street cleaning, but for nine months, they've taken over these streets. It's not right for the residents. We're losing money on it because we get tickets. Something has to be done about this. Or I'm just falling on deaf ears, apparently.
No, you're not. Keep talking, please.
Because my councilman isn't even looking at me. Hi, how's it going? Yeah, so you might want to do something about that, because I have a loud voice and I bark. This is annoying. Nine months, they have taken over.
Thank you, sir. Omar Baldwin, please, no, we're not going to clap on the speakers for general public comment. No clapping or booing, it's disrupting the meeting. We want to make sure that all their time is heard. Morning, sir.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Omar Baldwin. I'm founder and CEO of Peace Please Incorporated. Today, I would like to talk to you guys about peace and how possible peace on earth is. I'm going to give you guys a simple equation of peace, and I'm going to use Jesus Christ, the body of Christ. I was baptized twice. I was baptized in the water, and I was baptized in the spirit. And if everybody get baptized in the water and in the spirit, then everybody will understand the laws of Jesus Christ, and that will open the doors for us to actually share natural resources, love our neighbors, help each other, and stop wars, because we will understand the love of Christ and the love of God. And I challenge anybody on the media in this country or out of this country to a debate, a peaceful debate, and we can veto record the debate. And whoever beats me, I would just quit. I will never try to progress peace again.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. And it's incredibly rude what you've done for public input at these meetings. That being said, again, you're going to consider the Olympics, two things, three things, A and B. The economy in 1984 is totally different than the economy now. Look at the film industry that's disappeared from LA. Look at the aerospace industry that's disappeared from LA. Look at the automobile industry that's disappeared from the state of California. But if you decide you're going to go ahead and vote for the Olympics, here's a plan that you might consider. Use the Olympic Village, put the Olympic Village at the VA Hospital on the west side of LA, and have them develop those homes for veterans to use after the Olympics is over. That would be a win-win situation, where you'd have housing for veterans. The Village could be developed by private input without public cost, and you'd be able to put some veterans off the street, in keeping with the mayor's grand plan to house all the veterans. Otherwise, you're just spinning wheels and blowing smoke.
Wayne, not here? Okay. Brian?
On the lead on LaRouche PAC, we have a titled, entitled "A Breakdown Crisis Beyond What FDR Faced: Take the Right Steps and Take Them Now." Now, I'm pretty sure people have heard the collapse that just happened yesterday, and a continual collapse of what's called the financial markets around the globe. Now, LaRouche has stated this for a long time. You do not have a physical productive economy that would sustain a derivatives market, which is actually exploding right now. Now, I attended for four days the Young Democrats of America, and let me just tell you something. Those young folks don't know what the hell to do. And so, for matter of fact, they're all basically dead. Now, if we don't do something, we're all dead.
Henry? You're not Henry. Sir, you're disrupting the meeting by coming up to the podium, and so we're going to ask you to have a seat, not march in the aisles.
Yes, everybody got a copy of this letter from me, right? And so you're aware that you've got to make back payments. And we know that the first word in Weasel and Wesson is "we." However, the first word from "we" in Wesson is "on," making back payments to Laces and Cal Puzz for the benefit of we the people. Now, y'all been hiding, not giving Mayor Bradley credit for sheltering the pay of Hackla and Colley employees in the first place. So whoever failed to give Mayor Bradley credit for sheltering the pay of Hackla and Colley employees in the first place, is going to have to make back payments in the second place and get full credit for it. So, when do you plan on becoming honorable people instead of niggardly people? You know, y'all just sit around here, descendants of immigrants and slaves, the college degrees, trying to make foods out of others than me.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Another brutal murder on Hollywood Walk of Shame. Remember that Olympic Committee, twenty-year-old Hispanic, blood rolling in the street, dead. And I'd like to also point out, before the Plum Committee, not this week, but pretty soon, will be permission to destroy forty-eight units of low-income, affordable housing in Hollywood that have been there for over half a century. That's at the corner of Yucca and Argyle, and they want to build, I think, a twenty-seventh story office building. That'll be next to the seventeen-story building that they want to build, the hotel, and that will be next to the two twin Millennium Towers, and the same entrance and exit will take care of everybody, as long as the cars are flying. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Vote no. Why do I say vote no? Hitler's murderous actions left the mark on humanity. So has city council, in one way or another, on everyone who live in this world of ours called the City of Angels. But yet, black lives do matter when black lives are being killed on our streets, whether it's African-American or a Latino population. So, for this deadly venture, why did no one try to stop them, LAPD? Why didn't anyone want to stop them, LAPD? Do black lives matter? I can't breathe! I can't breathe, mommy, I can't breathe! Sad to say, Mr. Big Ears.
Eric? Previn?
It's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. Tomorrow morning at 9:30, there's an Ethics Commission meeting. I wanted to bring everyone, that to everyone's attention. And to ask that this body consider hearing items a bit later in the day. I know you mix it up according to your schedule in a variety of ways, but item thirty-eight tomorrow is Krikorian Busciano on an Airbus H-125 for almost $4 million, sir, so that's a nice one. We should just get a chance to speak on it. Item thirty-nine is Mr. Rue is bringing in the planning deputy from, I believe her name is Weitzler, Renee Weitzler, for a contract from LeBarge, so that's an interesting update. And then, Wesson and Krikorian are putting an extra $480,000 into the neighborhood councils to keep all the stuff I was talking about in CD2 at the final track map in check. We just don't want any waves there, sir. And the way to do that is to continue to give the neighborhood councils wide authority to make technical corrections, which is exactly what this item calls for them to do. And on a brighter note, on September 1, the Board of Supervisors are having a big hearing because Mr. Dawson, and I'm sure many others, are not for a big women's prison in New York.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Also, wanted to address members of the public. We've gotten some complaints from the public, and it was from the very people who are wearing hoods and swastikas and other things and making gestures. It is a matter of free speech, and there are things that are... Don't clap. If you clap one more time, you're going to be asked to leave. That's the third time I've now... Gestures that are disrupting the meeting and clapping and booing will not be allowed. So one more time, and you'll be asked to leave the chambers. These are the same individuals that continue to disrupt this meeting day in and day out, and are often asked to leave for doing so. Just wanted to let those members of the public that filed the complaints formally to let them know. However, if members of the public are threatened at all, or feel they're disrupting their participation, we ask that you let the sergeants know as well. It's one thing to disrupt the council members, it's another to disrupt the public, and we have to differentiate and document those. So if any individuals feel actually threatened, please let our public safety officers know right away. So I wanted to share that with you, and thank you to the public that is here and has sat through that as well. Now, we're going to go ahead and go, we've got a special one, I believe, that's been circulated for special one.
Yes, Mr. President. A special motion has been circulated, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Recently, the city council approved the street vacation at Cabrito Road and Van Nuys Boulevard, which included a road closure. Since the posting of today's agenda, a young man was shot and killed at the same location. Immediate action is required to authorize the Bureau of Engineering to issue a revocable permit for the immediate installation of a wrought iron gate in order to effectuate the street vacation for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Martinez, please, want to speak to this? Before we actually speak, let's go ahead and vote on the findings. So, now that we have the findings before us, we'll go ahead and open the roll and vote on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, thank you very much. Floor is yours.
President, is my mic on? So I'm introducing the Rule 23 today to allow the property owner to build a wrought iron fence in the public right-of-way in order to address an immediate public safety need in my district. A little over a month ago, we approved a street vacation along Cabrito Road to help address a very large homeless encampment in my district. And on Friday, unfortunately, at the encampment, it took a decisive turn for the worse. There was a murder on Friday morning of someone who was living there at the encampment in my district. So we find the need, there is an emergency to try to allow the abutting property owner to receive a revocable permit from the city to build a wrought iron fence to block any further access to the public right-of-way to the vacated property. And in the next week or two, we're going to be also doing a cleanup. So at the same time that we're cleaning up that area, we'd like to give access to the property owner to install the iron fence. So I ask for your I-vote. This is a small step to try to clean up that area, and I ask for your I-votes in passing this motion.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Martinez, we do have one card, so we'll take one minute on this special.
You have to, for Nuri, CD6, you have to have an emergency permit because she discovered that there's homeless living in her district, making all kinds of threats, like people with hoods and other people who can't get a job. So finally, they realize they have to start building walls and emergency fences. So, I urge an I-vote on this, because, do it for Nuri! Do it for Nuri. She's scared of the homeless, and they're all over the place. Van Nuys has turned into a sewer because there's no jobs. So they have to build giant walls to protect the Jews and the rich white people who still live in that district, and they need to make special emergency fences. I want to build a fence around City Hall so I can keep you all in here.
John Walsh?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. I'd like to commend Ms. Martinez, because when somebody is murdered in her district like this, she takes action. But when somebody is murdered Saturday on Hollywood Boulevard, right across the street at the Windmere Hotel, at the Cashmere Hotel, across the street from Hollywood and Highland, Mr. O'Farrell doesn't give a...
This is not on the item, Mr. Walsh. This is not on the item, and you're addressing specific council members. You'll address this body and stay on the item.
I want to say she's doing an excellent job, and you're making sure that the blood that gets shed in your district is not shed for nothing. But when the blood is shed in my district of Hispanics, they don't give a syphilitic rat's ass.
Thank you. So seeing no other cards on this item, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 13, called by Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney. What we're gonna do on this item is I'm gonna... We will have a public comment for 15 minutes on this issue, a minute each. And Mike, I'm calling on a Michael. Okay, so Michael, last name with a G. So Michael, if you're here, come on up. Saba Wahid. Gary Bogan. Come forward. Yes, sir, identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Yeah, good afternoon, sir. I want to talk about...
What was your name again?
My name is Michael Gethman. I'm cab driver for ITO, a cab company, for most to be 40 years. And I want to talk about Uber Cab Company. I leave some papers in each one, your commissioners, about what was happened last week with Uber Company. You're talking about safety. They don't have any safety. They catch guy for two years working in Uber Company in Glendale, sell drugs with weapons, with all problems what he have, money. Another way, how in Los Angeles company can coming out of any license, any approved anything? And company tell you, we are new one. But new what? It's nothing new. It's just transportation, service public. And company not give you any approved to insurance, safety, anything. And you gonna ask Uber representative right now, how many caps, how many units they have in the street? They never answer you. They don't have any idea.
Thank you, sir. Saba Wahid, Gary Bogan, and Tim McCosker. Yes?
Good afternoon. My name is Saba Wahid, and I am the research director at the UCLA Labor Center. The airport is the last lifeline for the taxi industry. Our research found that in one year, taxi trips dropped by 18% everywhere in the city except for the airport, where it increased by 15%. In that same year, the industry lost over 300 jobs. We're very concerned about what kinds of employments are being replaced with these jobs. Allowing unlimited TNC vehicles on the streets floods the market, making it impossible for any driver to earn a viable family-supporting wage. We need to better understand the impact of TNCs on job quality, standards, and wages. We are happy to learn that the committee recommends council get CPUC pickup data. We think we need more. We should get regulatory compliance, revenue, mileage, and rates. If the city is unable to get data, it should commission a study to do a cost-benefit analysis of the economic impact of TNCs in the city. Thank you.
Okay, please come and identify yourself.
Honorable council members, my name is Gary Bogan, and I'm a yellow cab driver, and I've been in the industry since 1988. And I want to speak in favor of the Minority Report from the Trade, Commerce, and Technology Committee. I believe that public safety is overriding concern for anyone overseeing the transportation industry. But some of the comments from some of the council members at the committee meeting concern me, where they dismiss charges of felons working in the industry as being sensationalistic. I just don't believe that that is credible. We have, Uber and Lyft have fought fingerprint-based background checks, tooth and nail. And the question is, why would a company, I think with so many controversial charges against us, would fight this so heavily? You would think that these companies would step forward to be good corporate citizens and improve their image. It is because that...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. No, thank you, your time is up. Next speaker.
Good morning. Tim McCosker, Glazer Weil for City Cab and Yellow Cab. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Today, you will either veto the action and send it back with a message, or not veto it and send a message. And while we stand in support of the Minority Report, we also urge this council to exercise the full extent of its authority to protect the consumer, to protect the public. You heard a great deal of testimony at your TCT Committee about the importance of fingerprints. You heard from the PUC saying there is no reason why, in her opinion, on behalf of the PUC, that these TNCs should not use fingerprints. So we would urge you to exercise your full authority, as you do in so many other areas of city endeavor, where you require fingerprinting if someone wants to open a billiard hall. We would ask you, again, to call on the PUC, to call on your own city resources to do as much as you possibly can to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Thank you very much.
Okay, David Shapiro, I think an Aradzadorian. And I don't have a name. It's ITOACAB. Ruth Goldkorn, Denny Schneider. Identify yourself, sir.
Good morning, city council. I've gone proudly from leading the drivers in a seven-month movement to their independence, forming driver-owner co-ops, which worked, to today, when if you let these people into the airport, I'll no longer be able to make it. I can't make a living as a professional cab driver, letting people... If you hear the radio ads, just bring your car and we'll put you to work at Uber. That makes no sense whatsoever. We ran the movement to educate you in the press. Then you were all educated. Now you're in a fog about what works. Politics has dominated, and the driver corps who has sacrificed so much, the professionals, are unrewarded and put aside.
Thank you. Denny, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Denny Schneider, president of ARSAQ. You've heard all the other arguments, but I'm concerned about a different one, and that has to do with the controls of the geofence. I don't think it's gonna work, and there's gonna be an awful lot of cars parked and traveling all over the neighborhoods around the airport. We've called for a transponder, and it seems to be going on deaf ears. I'm sorry, but it's gonna be an environmental impact, and that's why you'll hear from our attorneys, and there's a separate hearing on that. Thank you.
Okay. Ruthie, please come forward. Can we get a handheld mic? Handheld mic, please. There it is. Handheld mic. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Ruthie Goldkorn. I represent various disability rights organizations, and I'm chair of the Democratic Party's Disabilities Caucus. There is no TNC commission like there is a taxi commission. Not Uber nor Lyft have a program for complying with disabled access requirements to provide service, and the program requirement is very, very clear. The fact that DOJ recognized the violations in their $7 million-plus fine, including disabled access compliance, is enough of a red flag for you to override Lawa's decision. The implications of violating California civil rights statutes and federal civil rights statutes and the authority of the city and Lawa are beyond significant. But if you don't want to think about us, why don't you think about the rest of the community and consider the regulations of taxis as being identical? All they're doing is using the internet for dispatch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so did we get a Radzar? Zadorian? Did he come up? And did we get a representative from, I guess it's ITOACAB, but there's no name? Let us try Douglas Carstens. Douglas Carstens.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable council members. My name is Douglas Carstens. I'm here on behalf of the Alliance for Regional Solution to Airport Congestion. We had submitted a letter, 20 copies of it. It's dated August 24, 2015. We oppose this NILA as it is written now. We support the Minority Report. We've also submitted an appeal under the California Environmental Quality Act. California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, of course, is a Bill of Rights for an environmental democracy. It's a bedrock California environmental law. We realize this is a 245, but it is also required to do proper SEQA review. That review will cover clean fleet and public safety requirements. We find it interesting that the Majority Report requires in Number 7 that Lawa report on clean fleet requirements. That must be done now, prior to the approval. We've submitted an air quality experts letter. We also submitted the district attorney's lawsuit. We ask that you take the time to review and condition this NILA properly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
My name is Jesse Dotson.
I didn't hear you.
My name is Jesse Dotson, and I like...
Oh, Mr. Dotson, I got you. Get on. Get on. Come on. And McHale, the United Independent Taxi, and I think it's McHale. All right. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmen. Good evening. My eye opposing the TNC on the following reasons. One does not require law enforcement fingerprinting on the order drivers. It is a risk that anyone can become Uber drivers, even people within criminal records. TNC does not provide regulation on the having equipment, safe cars to transport clients. The Uber believes heavily on the technology that use not secure and can be background risky the lives of the people. Uber does not have an insurance or liability that covers all damage, or it depends on heavily on driver's personal insurance.
Finish your sentence.
Los Angeles should lead on regular Uber for the safety of our Los Angeles residents and tourism. Los Angeles should be set an example of putting safety first.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Mikhail Cipinuk. I'm owner-operator of United Independent Taxi, and I'm...
What was your name again? What was your name again?
Mikhail Cipinuk.
I got you. Okay, go ahead.
I already lost my Beverly Hills West Hollywood unit because it's impossible to operate because of Uber and Lyft. Los Angeles taxi driver already lost income. Only the place we can survive right now is Los Angeles Airport. If you're gonna lose the airport, what I have to do? Lose my three-wheel Chevy and go to work for Uber for less than minimum wage and lose everything, lose my condo? Okay, we have a lot of drivers who work more than 20, 30 years. So what we have to do? Lose our job because some student want to make extra money without knowledge city or don't know how to drive the car? Uber and Lyft, basically, it's illegal vehicle for hire. It's illegal taxi, doesn't matter how they call, TNC or riders.
No, keep going. I took some of your time. Oh, you finished? So let me just check. Did I get the representative from ITOACAB? There's no name? There's a Kittredge address? Okay, Mr. Sax. Arnold Sax. Go right ahead.
Good morning, thank you, Arnold Sax. Well, fascinates me about this whole argument, actually, is, well, there's a couple things, A and B. Will they be paying the $4.50 passenger, $0.50 passenger fee that passengers pay to cabs when they pick up at the airport? How will that be regulated? And I believe that somebody who worked for Yellow Cab mentioned that actually, $2 of that goes to the administrative services that runs, oversees the taxi cabs that operate at LAX. But what even fascinates me even more is how quickly you acted on Uber, whether they're employees or the company or non-employees, but the port of LA, for 20 years, you've been dealing with truck drivers who can't get regulated with trucking companies. How is that possible? You've had laws that have been passed, court cases that have been passed, that legalize certain distinctive possibilities for employment, and you can't do anything about the ports?
Thank you. All right, that concludes public... No, 15 minutes, and 15 minutes is over, and you are disrupting the meeting. Please sit down. Sergeants, take him. He can go. Sergeants, sergeants, go get him and show him the special seat outside. No, he is continuing to disrupt this meeting. I want that noted for the record.
Say his name. His name.
And that is Mr. Herman Mr. Amando... And that is Mr. Herman, Mr. Amando Herman. All right, I now want to go to the chair. And so I'll recognize Mr. Bob Bloomingfield to begin our conversation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On this item 13, before I begin discussing it, what I'd like to ask for is to bifurcate the recommendations and take item one, recommendation one separately, and then for us to now discuss items two through 11. And I'll discuss those items, but either without objection or...
So without objection, that's the way we will proceed.
Okay. Okay, great. So now we're going to discuss now, starting items two through seven, and I wanted to say a few words about that. You know, Angelenos and visitors to our city have been using services like Uber and Lyft to get to and from the airport, just as they've been using them to get to and from work, play, and everything in between. Without having some sort of sanctioned access to the airport, they're doing so in a manner that's unregulated and inconvenient for both the driver and the passenger, who are often forced to use nearby hotels or worse, creating tremendous amount of congestion. The question before us is how can we respond to the rapid changes, the way Angelenos get around, to ensure that we remain on the cutting edge and have sensible regulation? Last week, we had a very extensive hearing, more than almost six hours of informative testimony, enlightening debate, impassioned public comment in my committee. We decided, the majority of the committee decided to uphold the Board of Commissioners' decision to allow Uber and Lyft and other TNCs into the airport. The decision, in my view, was a major win for consumers who have long voted with their dollars and their smartphones in favor of the choice provided by TNCs. But it was also a concern about safety and regulations that we needed to address. And I want to commend my colleagues on that committee, Councilmembers Bonin, Krikorian, Busciano, and Martinez, for their hard work of being part of a six-hour hearing and asking very thoughtful questions to all the panelists. When we started with Lawa, we talked to the regulators, to the PUC, to the DOT. We talked to the providers, both Uber and Lyft, and limo drivers and taxi drivers. We had a very extensive conversation. And that's important because this committee is not a rubber stamp committee. We want to make sure that this committee oversees important decisions and that we examine those decisions. We jump-started a long overdue conversation about consumer access and protection and other options at LAX. What we learned was enlightening. While parties on both sides differ about the efficacy of various background check methods, including fingerprinting and LiveScan, you know, I'm not convinced personally that fingerprinting is better than the other system. People, reasonable people had different opinions on that. There's no such thing ultimately as a perfect background check. While the in-route tracking and ID verification give TNC riders not available to other services, there's goods and bads on both sides. Furthermore, regulations on transportation options, both within and without the airport, are not even. So it's very difficult when you're comparing apples and oranges because they're not apples and oranges. One set of regulations are for taxis, another for TNCs, and still a different one for limos. Limos that for all this time, when we asked them, they have not been fingerprinting, they're not required to do so, and yet they say their folks are safe. After hours of debate, though, a consensus emerged around the need to keep Angelenos safe, no matter how they get to and from the airport and what we do once they go off of city property. Toward that end, the committee put forward a series of recommendations to keep Angelenos safe while preserving accessibility and choice. And that is the question before us. Right now, we're not deciding on the question of the NILA. We're deciding on the recommendations that the committee put forward, and the committee put them forward unanimously. We worked together as a committee. We had very different opinions, but we all agreed on a series of recommendations. Among the things we agreed to was that the CPUC to do what Californians expect them to do, develop effective and comprehensive and uniform background checks for all providers. Additionally, we want to move toward enacting environmental standards for all airport ground transportation and begin with a citywide process of streamlining taxi regulations to try to level the playing field on the taxi side, to move towards streamlining some of those regulations. The debate around these issues has been tense. Many people have weighed in on both sides. In the end, for me, the most important voice was that of the consumer. And colleagues, we have the opportunity to move forward with a policy. What I'm asking you right now is to approve the committee recommendations that we put forward in the names of the millions of consumers, in the names of safety, in the name of access, and in the name of compromise, because the recommendations that we put forward were a good compromise that the entire committee agreed to.
Okay, I'm going to refer now to Mr. Krikorian and then I'll get to Mr. Coretts and Mr. Bonin. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, for the extraordinary work that we did in committee under your leadership. I want to take a few minutes just to kind of set this issue up a little bit, if I may, Mr. President, before I ask for a few changes in the committee report and ask for a sequence of votes. I need to say first, I think there's unanimity in the belief that we need more transportation options for LAX. And I want to first recognize Mr. Bonin's leadership on behalf of both his district and the traveling public that comes through the fifth busiest airport in the world in working, doing yeoman's work in trying to expand those options along with our mayor. They have truly, the mayor and Mr. Bonin have been champions of expanding access to LAX in every way. And I think part of that, part of this discussion has resulted in a sort of a sense that most of us share, I think, most of us here and most people out in the public, that TNCs will be servicing LAX. The question before us is, under what terms and how we should do that? And how do we ensure the other public policy concerns that we have? And the Airport Commission has spent a great deal of time wrestling with these issues and trying to come up with a NILA that would be a template, hopefully for many other airports in the country. And they probably spend a lot more time than most airport leadership has spent because of the importance of LAX to this industry, to the traveling public throughout the world. So I want to also recognize the work of the Airport Commission in this area. So why did I bring this 245 motion, then? It certainly was not intended to be any indication of disrespect for the work of the Airport Commission. It was simply to provide this council, as the policymakers of this city, with the opportunity to grapple with some of these very difficult, cutting-edge issues. I think we would have been derelict in our duties had we not taken this into City Hall for this council to discuss issues involving the safety of the traveling public, issues involving whether our disabled community is treated with dignity and has equal access to all of the transportation options that we would like to see. To ensure that every single part of our city and every resident of Los Angeles, regardless of their income or their ZIP code or the color of their skin, has equal, fair access to every transportation option in the airport as well. Those are pretty fundamental questions that are important for this council to ask and to discuss. And so that was the reason for bringing it. I want to thank those who seconded the motion to bring that before us. When we had the committee hearing in Mr. Bloomingfield's committee, this room was packed, as it is again today. We heard from every conceivable stakeholder representative and we had a comprehensive, thorough discussion about a lot of these issues. Gave some of us some comfort, what we heard, also raised a lot more questions, what we heard. And that is what the legislative process should be. And so again, I want to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield's leadership of the committee in seeing that through. I, for myself, I have a number of recommendations that I'd like to make for amendments to the Majority Report and particularly the report back recommendations and others, items two through 11, is it, Mr. Bloomingfield? Two through 11? But before we do that, I would also like the council to have the opportunity, before we move to that point, to vote on the initial 245 motion, which I brought so that we could take jurisdiction of this. I would like the council to be able to have the opportunity to vote, to veto the action of the commission, and then to move forward. If that, for whatever reason, does not prevail, then we would be able to move forward with the additional motions, which I'd be happy to discuss now or later.
Well, you know, I do have two other speakers on the queue. Why don't I listen to them and then I'll come back to...
Should I respond to that and then?
You could, go ahead.
Just as, what I'm happy to proceed, just as a procedural question, I think. What I'd prefer to do is, as I think we've discussed, is we'll talk about the recommendations. We'll vote on that. And then your request that we hear the rejection before we hear the concurrence for it, I'm fine with, but I think we need to move first through items two through 11, the recommendations, whatever changes people want to make. And then we'll vote on the NILA and I'll honor your request to do the rejection first.
So, Mr. President, I have a number of amending motions. I can speak to them now or we could speak after other members have had an opportunity to weigh in on the issues.
What I think I want to do is hear from the other two members and then I'll come back to you. So, Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Mr. Krikorian. I may have a slightly less positive take on the initial action. I think Uber and Lyft and other similar services are completely popular and they even, in some cases, bring in a demographic that wasn't using taxi services before. So I think there's some real positives to them. At the same time, I feel like the Airport Commission has a responsibility first to protect the public and I feel like they took somewhat of a pass on that responsibility. I don't think there are many on council that will disagree that a fingerprint background check is absolutely necessary, but wasn't included by the commission. The San Francisco District Attorney last week stated as fact that Uber hires killers and rapists among their drivers. And the Association of Deputy District Attorneys agree. Uber says their system is better. They provided no documentation of that whatsoever, other than their word. I think it's just about cutting corners, which some of the TNCs have done. I think that's been part of their business model. I don't see why we would allow it. And I think airport security and public safety should be the top priority at the airport. And I believe it's just a matter of time. It might be a year or two or three. At some point, we will have background checks that include fingerprinting because it's just the right logical thing to do. Hopefully, we'll have a system that covers all the different models of transportation at the airport and they'll all have the same best practices. But the best time to do that is right now when we have the leverage and we will be passing on the leverage. After decades of trying to mitigate air pollution and congestion at the airport, TNCs will be clogging the airport and polluting the airport and only a virtual fence that I don't believe will work protects us from that happening. Taxis green their fleet. TNCs aren't required to do any of that and I think they should. Taxis must serve the disabled. TNCs don't have that responsibility and I think they should. Taxis must cover the whole city. TNCs don't have that responsibility and I think they should. So I believe the responsible thing for us to do, while we have the most leverage, would be to say, let's veto this measure, return it to the airport with these suggestions and let them come back with these changes. Now, I think as a secondary measure, which is a lot better than nothing, we have a motion that was made and both Mr. Krikorian and I have some friendly amendments to it that, in my case, would ask that we amend, I think it's recommendation number two of the Majority Report, to add in several requirements, which I can talk about now or talk about later. But in the meantime, I would encourage this council, one more time, to think about what we're doing and veto the Airport Commission's action as inadequate.
Mr. Bonin? Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as many of you know, I opposed us asserting jurisdiction on this decision because I was very proud of and supportive of the work of the Board of Airport Commissioners. I still am. And I take very strong exception to the accusations that they were not looking out for public safety. I think they did a remarkable job. However, having said that, I'm actually glad that we asserted jurisdiction, with all apologies to BoAC, because I think it has been an enlightening and informative discussion and I think the process has actually been a good one for this body. We learned a hell of a lot in committee, particularly under the leadership of Mr. Bloomingfield. And I'll get into that in just a second. First of all, I'm supportive of the work that BoAC did for a number of different reasons. I think it is a great work of problem solving on a number of levels. First of all, customers or passengers at our airport have suffered for too long with too few choices and they demand more choices. And the ride-sharing apps Uber and Lyft are enormously popular. People are baffled by the fact that they can take a rideshare to the airport but can't take one home from the airport. People are baffled by the fact that they can go around Los Angeles in one of these but can't get one to pick them up at the airport. The airport solved this by coming up with a series of smart regulations. One of the problems they addressed is neighborhood protection. Right now, drivers from Uber and Lyft will congregate near the airport, hoping to get a call because they're not allowed in the airports. They will park in front of my residence homes or they will park in front of businesses, denying revenue to those businesses. Through the smart geofence procedure that BoAC worked together with my office on, that won't happen anymore. The drivers will not be able to get a call. It will not be technologically possible or feasible. We've gone from using sort of fax machine technology to using email technology. It's a difference between the transponders and the geofencing. Right now, we have too much congestion in the central terminal area. This isn't going to increase congestion, Mr. Coretts. This is going to decrease it by giving folks the different options. We learned a lot in this process about public safety and about background checks. We came into this and folks were talking about fingerprinting being the gold standard for background checks. Well, nationally, they're not considered the gold standard for background checks. The FBI says they shouldn't be used as the sole source for employment screening. They actually recommend that you, nationally, they recommend that you use a wider process where you check courthouse records and you use other databases, a variety of sources, which is what Uber and Lyft does and what the PUC requires. That's actually how we deal with limos and town cars and the courtesy shuttles and the flyaway buses. We learned that we have different standards for different industries. So a lot of us have come to the conclusion that maybe we should be urging belts and suspenders and that if the taxis have fingerprinting, maybe they should also be using the same system that Uber and Lyft have. And if Uber and Lyft have this system that is recognized for some strengths, then they should also be using fingerprinting. And so we'll be urging the PUC to allow both systems and we'll be urging BoAC to move towards having a unified system where they have to do both sorts of background checks. No form of background check is perfect. They all have holes in them. Fingerprinting have plenty of holes in them and it is incredibly unfair to demonize the hundreds or thousands of folks in Los Angeles who drive for Uber or Lyft as criminals and rapists. There are some criminals who have passed a background check for one industry and they've also passed it for the other. Statewide, Uber has rejected in between 400 and 600 people who were certified taxi drivers because they didn't pass their background checks. So that has become a bit of a red herring. In committee, as Mr. Bloomingfield said, we spent five or six hours on this and we came up with a series of recommendations. Ultimately, I think that the BoAC NILA is a good one, a sound one. It's forward-thinking. It recognizes that the future is here and helps us as a city and as an airport to figure out how best to embrace that and how best to adjust to that. There's going to be a number of amendments by Mr. Krikorian. My recommendation would be that we approve the NILA, reject the veto, but there's a number of Mr. Krikorian's motions that I support and look forward to them as part of a holistic package.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to rise and really commend the leadership all the way around on this issue, both from Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Coretts, in terms of bringing this to council and asserting jurisdiction. Mr. Bloomingfield, for your leadership on the committee and your marathon hearing... Mr. Blumenfeld, for your leadership on the committee and your marathon hearing the other day. I stand with the mayor. I stand with my colleagues to bring TNCs to the airport. However, we have heard plenty of truths that are very inconvenient for us to hear, and as decision-makers, we have to take those very, very seriously. And I'm talking about the realities of the criminal convictions over the past number of years and more recently that have been attributed to TNCs. And that's something that, as legislators, we have to take very seriously, and we cannot simply push it aside in the zeal to get TNCs to the airport. That combined with the burdensome level of regulation for taxi companies imposed by us, by the way, by the city versus little or no oversight for TNCs. That is not a level playing field. That is a double standard. Lack of requirement regulation on refusing a trip. That's very unclear. It's fuzzy. We know that with taxi drivers, that is crystal clear. With TNCs, with this agreement, that is not clear. Also, the inequality with regard to disability, the ADA requirements that taxi companies with their 240 cabs are required by us to provide, but not anywhere in the NILA agreement for requirements for TNCs. I see no reason whatsoever why the rush, why we can't get this right before we allow TNCs in a greater capacity at the airport. What we have on the table, in my view, is a series of inequalities and a double standard, and I cannot in good conscience support that. But I can support and would urge my colleagues to support adopting the 10 requests minus the concurrence before we move forward with opening up the airport. It will change the nature of those who depend on making a living as taxi drivers. And what keeps sticking in my craw is the inherent unfairness of this approach to that well-established regulatory system that, again, we are responsible for. We need to be responsible for making this right before we allow this. And that is the view that I have. So, I've made myself very clear, and I think that we need to move forward in the spirit of complete fairness minus the zeal. Let's not be so seduced by the sharing economy that we're in this mad rush at the expense of others. And I just don't think that's fair. So, I would ask that we do the 10 requests first, and then in a number of months, we can open up the airport to TNCs when the level field, the playing field truly is level. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, after five hours of committee last week, I have yet to be convinced that asking for additional background checks is a bad thing. I think I was very clear last week in terms of where I stood, just in terms of a policymaker and ensuring that the passengers who visit our city or live in our city have the assurance that we've done everything possible so that when they get into a Lyft or an Uber or a TNC or whatever they choose to ride in, that we've done everything possible to ensure that the background checks have been taken care of. I wasn't going to share this experience because I didn't want to get the TNC driver in trouble, but I'm going to share it anyways. Last week, I was in San Francisco for a day, and I took a Lyft and I took an Uber. And it was fine. I didn't have any problems. And I also took a taxi. On my way to the airport, the driver shared, I asked, how do you feel about getting fingerprinted? Do you think it's a bad thing? Do you think it's going to hurt your business? How do you feel about it? He shared with me on the way to the airport that he had two friends who were driving for a TNC, and both had DUIs. One of them got caught six months later and signed up with a different name, and so therefore he was continuing to drive. The second driver, his friend, who had also a DUI, had not been caught yet. If that does not tell us that there is something really wrong with the way we are doing these background checks, I don't know what is. And that was just one experience. It happened to me on Friday on the way to the airport. The other thing that I learned during the committee process is the woman who was here from the PUC, and I can't recall her name. The fact that she didn't know what hop, skip, and drive was, which is one of the features that the TNC uses to drive your kids around. As a mom, I'm not interested in such a service, but if people are, we need to ensure that the regulatory agencies that are overseeing these types of transportation methods, that we're ensuring that they know what they are and that they exist, and they're being regulated, and that people are getting the correct background checks. That is alarming, colleagues, alarming to me to have someone here from the state not know what that feature is and not being able to tell me whether they are being overseen by the PUC. So, again, I have not heard anything that would convince me that doing additional fingerprinting is a bad thing. I don't know where we live or what kind of society we think we live in if we don't check the newspaper and turn on the TV and see every other day you hear something happening. How can we not take the necessary steps to ensure that the public is safe? I just have not been convinced otherwise, and I cannot support the NILA report. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio?
Briefly, Mr. President, and I want to praise, obviously, the Commission and the committee for their hard work. But I share the concerns raised by my colleagues, Ms. Martinez, Mr. O'Farrell. I'm happy to join you in the concerns that you've raised. For me, it's simple. I think we ask real simple questions to get to the core, the essence of it. First, is it safe? Right? Is it safe? It's a real simple question. It's the reason we have government. It's our duty, our obligation. It's the only thing of why we exist is we need to know, is it safe? What's the standard of review? Right? What's taking place in this area? And we know that the TSA uses this, right? The fingerprint, as fingerprint-based background checks. We know that the FBI uses it. We know that our police department uses it. We know that our county district attorney and the San Francisco district attorney have major concerns that, in fact, they're suing the company. So, that, to me, seems to be the standard of review, and I don't know that something other has shown to be better than that. There's an assertion that, yes, no system is perfect. I can accept that, but that doesn't equalize the two systems. In fact, one is better. And our duty and our responsibility is to pick which one is best. I would say to you, and it's not that hard, it's simple, for me at least, to think about, how would I get around a name-based background check? Well, I can change my name. I have a father and a son who share my name. I have, I'm Gil Sadio, and I have a brother named Phil Sadio. I mean, it doesn't seem to me a real difficult thing to do. I looked at what the DA in San Francisco has put forward, and I'm impressed by that. But one thing I can't change is my fingerprint. That can't be done. And so, yes, neither system is perfect, but that does not mean that they're the same. In fact, one is better and one is the best. And we're duty-bound to choose the best for the people of the city of Los Angeles. And so, that's my first question. So, what is the best? And it's simply that, that we must have, and I will support the motion that calls for us citywide to have a fingerprint-based background check for all persons who carry. We have no, that is our first duty. Second is the question you've raised, Mr. Farrell, O'Farrell, is it fair? There's a lot of exclusion that takes place in the structure of the business model of these carriers. They exalt that they use no cash. Well, in my community, that excludes large parts of my community. There is a large unbanked community in Los Angeles. That's a reality. Mr. President, you introduced me to one of the principles that services that when you introduced me to next check-caching some 16 years ago. That's an important service that takes place in our communities because many are unbanked. That's just a reality. I talked to somebody who ran a driving school this weekend. They said, yeah, I have 4,000 clients. They all pay in cash. That means they're, because they don't have access to credit, they don't have credit cards, that means they can't use these other carriers. Right? That's not fair. I want to be sure that they service the entire region, the entire city of Los Angeles, one city. But the one most important that takes us to the question, is it fair and is it just, is the question of ADA. And simply on that question, that is the law. We have no exemptions on that. That is the law. It's 24/7. It's why we've been sued. It's why we're moving resources to fix sidewalks. These Americans, these Americans that are part of the Americans Disabled Act, they have a right to these services. This is a privilege to hold this franchise, to pick up people at our airport. It is a privilege to do business, and we have to make sure that those who want that privilege comply with the law. And that includes these Americans who have disabilities. They should have a right to be able to utilize these services. Mr. Farrell, you also raised a point about our environment. We should have one level playing field. I mean, it's very obvious, of course, if you go on an international flight, and if you're a bit taller than Mr. President and myself, you've got lots of luggage, you want to get in, come out and get in a nice big SUV. Who wouldn't want to do that, right? A big Escalade, a big Suburban, room for your luggage. But we don't permit that for the taxi industry. Say, no, you've got to have clean vehicles because we also put up our environment as another competing interest. And we say, you know, our environment is as important also as our convenience, and therefore, you've got to get in a smaller vehicle. And so, for those reasons, it's neither safe, I conclude, it's neither fair, but at the end of the day, it's also not just. And this city has to be a just city when it's implementing these policies. This is a privilege. It's an important privilege. We welcome the innovation. We welcome the choices, but they've got to be options and choices that are safe, fair, and just. And for that reason, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Please, please, no apart. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I don't know when, again, it's appropriate to talk about the substitute motions or if I'll let Mr. Kukorian.
Why don't you go right now?
I'll let Mr. Kukorian do that, do that first.
Okay.
I did just want to point out that I didn't intend in any way to disparage the drivers or customers of Uber and Lyft. My daughter is a frequent patron of Uber and Lyft, I have to admit. Her friends drive for Uber and Lyft. So, in no way do I disparage you, in no way do I expect you to stop functioning. At the same time, I do think there are a lot of things we could do that would be better for everyone in Los Angeles, and drivers and passengers are certainly included in that. And I have to say, when we had a similar hearing the last time and we noted them, many of our supporters of Uber and Lyft in the audience were nodding in agreement. So, while we're not trying to exclude you from the airport, we are trying to make sure that this is as safe and positive an experience for everyone. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Kukorian, and it would be appropriate to go through the suggested amendments.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, let me just say that too much of this debate was framed around false choices. Technology versus Luddites, for lack of a better word, innovation versus the old economy. This isn't that. Every technology that, every new technology that comes along has benefits and has the potential to create efficiencies, cost savings, and convenience. But every single technology, every single new technology that you can name in the history of civilization has also had negative impacts that policymakers have to grapple with. That's what this discussion has been about. So, for me, the bottom line in this debate has been about the essential component of fingerprints in background checks. And, you know, Mr. Bonin indicated that maybe they're not alone enough. That could be true. But they are an essential part of any useful background check system. I will give, Ms. Martinez shared an example. Let me share an example as well. About a week or so ago, my staff and I ordered a TNC ride from City Hall to LAX. And we got a driver who responded immediately. It was a young woman, face on there, name on there, who said that she would give us a lift to the airport. About a minute later, maybe not even a minute, came the text from that driver's account was a man who said, oh, I've just been added to my wife's account, so I'll be picking you up, not her. I'm not as pretty as she is, but I'm confirming the ride. So, you have a driver, a TNC driver, who's had the background check, who's had her record, you know, indicated as being clear, and then somebody else comes and accepts the ride. So, if you don't have fingerprinting to verify that, in fact, the person whose record is being checked is, in fact, that person, the entire structure is useless. So, look at what we do in this city. If you want to open a game arcade, if you want to open a dancing academy, if you want to open a skating rink in the city, you go to the police commission, you get a permit, and you get fingerprinted, and you get live-scanned. If you want to volunteer in my neighborhood park, you get fingerprinted, you get live-scanned. And yet, under the scenario we have now, the new technology of TNCs allows random strangers to pick up people throughout our city and at now, at LAX, without the person getting in the car having the slightest idea what that person's record is or who they are. I mean, hardly anybody hitchhikes anymore because of the danger of getting into a stranger's car. And yet, as soon as that stranger responds to us over our smartphone, suddenly that becomes a safe thing? No, it isn't, not without a fingerprint-based background check. So, now, there was discussion both in committee and here today that, well, Uber can identify a few hundred drivers who failed their security check, but they were former taxi cab drivers. Well, Uber still hasn't presented any evidence of that. They keep saying it, but they've never presented any evidence. But if they did present evidence, I've got to guess that a lot of those former taxi drivers are no longer taxi drivers because the fingerprint-based security check, background check, worked. And people who were approved as taxi drivers had subsequent convictions and can no longer drive a cab. That means the system works. So, I'd love to see those examples. Maybe Uber can present them one of these days, and we can actually have a chance to discuss them. Maybe we can see some of that evidence. But until we do, we have to assume that a background check that doesn't even verify who the person is that's being checked is not going to be useful. So, what I'm proposing, and what I, we moved in this direction in committee, and I'd like to move a little bit further in this direction today, is to get fingerprint background checks not just at LAX, but throughout our city, and ideally, throughout our state. And I hope that our actions that we will be taking today will encourage the PUC to do what it should have done when it enacted its first set of regulations, which is to have a robust, thoughtful, comprehensive set of regulations instead of being so quick to jump out the gate to deal with this new technology that they left so many holes in it that you could be a felony and felon driving a TNC vehicle through. So, with that.
Walk us through the amendments.
With that, I'd like to propose a few amending motions, and members, you have them all before you on your desks. I'd like to start with motion 13D, which replaces recommendation number nine in the majority report. And the only real change here is that it would ask the PUC to develop a revised, comprehensive, and uniform background check process and so on, as the committee recommended. But this would specify that it would include a fingerprint-based background check at the California Department of Justice and explore the recommended best practices of the National Association of Professional Background Screeners. So, I would submit that as, hopefully, as a friendly amendment. That's motion 13D. That's motion 13D.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
We've talked a lot about this issue. While I disagree with you on the general idea that the fingerprint is the gold standard, and I want to talk to that when I speak about the NILA in general, I think that the amendment says we've gone over, pushes us in a good direction, but I would ask that you change, you strike the word, the explorers, the recommended best practices, and you put that on equal footing with fingerprints. So to, I would accept it as a friendly if you're willing to strike the word, the explorers.
Yes, and that would be fine. So that our recommendation to the PUC would include both fingerprint-based background checks and the recommended best practices of the National Association of Professional Background Screeners. That would be, that would be fine.
And I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Motion 13E replaces recommendation number two in the majority report. And that recommendation had asked for a six-month and one-year progress report on the geofence. This would add a few other requests of the Airport Commission. First, to develop a 24/7 complaint hotline for ground transportation passengers to make complaints about any form of ground transportation directly to the airport. Two, to coordinate with the LAPD and airport police to report monthly on complaints that the airport gets and incidents related to ground transportation providers so that they can identify patterns and hold those companies accountable. And then with the six-month report on the geofence, to also add to that a report on driver citations relating to TNCs, taxis, and limousine drivers.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I want to clarify that the, you're saying to replace it. You're adding these to the items that we have on the geofence and the driver citation report backs. This is, you're adding, you're not eliminating what was there, but you're adding new conditions, correct?
Right. So what is already in the majority report is contained in subsection C of the motion. So it was our intention to retain all of that and then add to it. So replace the whole thing so that it would be a list.
Okay. And with that, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Motion 13F, and this is, I think, the most significant change, members. While we're asking the PUC to develop more robust background check requirements statewide, we have to also recognize that they may or may not listen to us in doing that. So motion 13F requests that the city attorney report back to us in 30 days on the feasibility and enforceability of exercising the city's authority to the fullest extent under all applicable law to require any transit provider, including all forms of charter party carriers to accept, who accept requests for rides in Los Angeles, to scrutinize their drivers using a fingerprint-based background check. So this would initiate the process of implementing a citywide ordinance applicable at the airport and everywhere else throughout our city to require fingerprint-based background checks for the referenced ground transportation providers.
And just to be clear on that, I don't think that we are initiating the implementation of that policy. This amendment is asking for a report back on the feasibility of that policy, to ask the city attorney, is it legal? What are the steps? We would then, as a body, have to debate that, what is the best policy and whether we move forward. This action does not implement that policy, but the feasibility.
Right. So the first step, members, would be to have the city attorney come back, give us the range of options available to us for such a fingerprint-based background check, given the state of state law. And then this body would make further instructions to the city attorney as to what, if any, policy to adopt.
So you're comfortable with that? Okay, the last amendment?
And then the last one is replacing recommendation number 10 with, well, I'm just going to read the language. It's short. "To encourage the Board of Airport Commissioners to adopt uniform standards as appropriate for all Lawa-regulated ground transportation operators and/or companies, and establish a protocol for the termination of any NILAs with ground transportation providers based upon patterns of repeated complaints against their drivers." And the point of this, members, is essentially, while there are enforcement mechanisms within the NILA pertinent to the drivers, and there's a termination provision in the NILA with regard to the TNCs, this would ask that where there's repeated violations by drivers associated with those TNCs, that there would be an opportunity for termination of that.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
And that's building on what we already have in there, in friendly amendment. We accept that.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I was trying to bite my tongue, but I just wanted to make a few comments. I first want to thank the committee, the TCT Committee, for doing five hours of testimony. I unfortunately couldn't attend, but I did hear partially, part of it. That's a lot of great work. And, you know, this conversations around the NILA and the TNC has made it clear the discrepancies in security practices used by numerous citywide transportation operators, the effectiveness of their background checks, and the lack of public information on security practices in general. It's important that we hold all transportation operators accountable when it comes to protecting our residents and our neighborhoods. The fact is, Uber and Lyft already operate at LAX without any oversight. The commission's, this entire Airport Commission action that is before us today is about oversight. The commission's decision, at the very least, brings these operators into the light of day. Common sense tells us that each one of these amendments makes sense and are a good thing, and I will fully support. However, what are we basing these recommendations on? I'm afraid that this process has become highly politicized. And furthermore, introducing and passing ordinance are fine, but what about the costs? The funding? The enforcement mechanism? The protocol? Which is why, when this issue first came before us earlier this month, I introduced a motion which instructed the Department of Transportation, and later we expanded in committee to have the CLA take lead, to work with all other departments, to report on the extent and sufficiency of background checks for all transportation operators in the city of Los Angeles, not just at LAX. I also asked for recommendations for background checks, best practices, and passenger and driver safety. You know, we must embrace the future while prioritizing on public safety. That's why regulating the industry now is the most responsible action for our residents and tourists. The agreement approved by the Board of Airport Commissioners gives us the city, us the city council, the leeway to cancel permits or modify regulations if problems occur, especially after we get a comprehensive report from the CLA, the Department of Transportation, and city attorney and whatnot. Also, we have the option at a later date to introduce and implement transportation regulations citywide, not just at LAX. Issuing permits to the TNCs allow passengers to continue to enjoy popular, safe, and convenient travels, travel alternatives to and from LAX. And I urge my colleagues to embrace the future and vote yes. And I, to support Councilmember Bloomingfield and Bonin's, I guess it's bifurcated now, so item 13-1, to support the Airport Commission's recommendations, and I guess 13-2, to support all the public safety amendments that are friendly to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. What I want to do now is I'm going to kind of flip the order. I'm going to call on Mr. Keretz because I know he has a amendment to introduce. Then I'm going to go to Mr. Bonin and then Mr. Bloomingfield for you to close on this portion. So, Mr. Keretz, with your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is intended to amend the majority report and is designed to piggyback on Mr. Kocorian's first three recommendations in 13E, A, B, and C, so mine, which is 13I, says D, E, and F. It asks that we include among the reports that come back in six months several points that I think have gotten a lot of discussion, but I don't believe were covered anywhere. One, the ability of TNCs serving LAX to ensure that drivers with vehicles qualify and prepare to meet all Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, are available to serve passengers at all times, and the performance of licenses in doing so. E, the performance of TNCs in being available to passengers emanating from any neighborhood in Los Angeles without exception. And F, the development of a policy and plan, and how best to require TNCs serving LAX to transition to using clean air vehicles within a specific period of time to be determined. So if those could be considered as friendly amendments, I'd like to ask that they be included.
These are, these are report backs. The one thing I would ask is that instead of singling out TNCs, that these are report backs that probably should be known for all providers at the airport, taxis, limos, everyone else. So if you'd be willing to change the ability, further report backs on these things, to change TNCs to all providers, airport providers?
Right, so...
Okay. So with that, with that change, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Now, it's my understanding that we do have another amendment, 13H, and I think that's Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members. With the committee's request of the CPUC to provide information technology, the Information Technology Agency with ZIP Code on pickup and drop-off locations, we can ensure that the people of South Los Angeles and the Northeast Valley and other parts of the city that these companies actually refer to as transportation deserts are getting the kinds of services in an equitable manner that we've frankly struggled with with taxi cab companies over the years, getting them to show up and show up in a timely manner to our neighborhoods in particular. We wanted to make sure that everybody's provided with this service, and this is an opportunity to open up that issues, and folks have been responsive to that. We put forward a motion that would also ask the companies to have vigorous outreach and information campaigns and marketing campaigns to communities in language and targeted towards geography that oftentimes get overlooked. And so that's what my amendment does, and I've offered it, and I believe it's been accepted as friendly.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
It's a great idea and want to embrace it and accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. So, Mr. Bonin to pre-close, and then Mr. Bloomingfield to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I concur with Mr. Bloomingfield on all of the friendly amendments and support them. We've heard a few anecdotes today about bad experiences with Uber and Lyft. I appreciate those. There are, there are bad experiences to be had with Uber and Lyft, just as there are bad experiences to be had with taxis. I think almost anybody that you talk to will tell you at one time or another in Los Angeles they've had a bad experience with a taxi. I'm not going to go into particular anecdotes, but I can certainly tell you that routinely I hear from my constituents that they can't get a ride from a taxi back to their homes near the airport because the drivers get upset that the fare won't be enough. I hear from folks routinely who say that the line at the taxi stand at the airport on a Friday or a Saturday night is 20 to 30 minutes, when they can get Uber or Lyft in a few seconds. There are stories you can tell for either industry. You can talk about the folks who've gotten dinged for stuff who drive for Uber and Lyft. You can talk about the fact that DOT has identified several, almost 100 since 2011, folks who've been driving who had fraudulently filled out their applications and had to have their licenses suspended. You can also talk about the different types of background checks that are done with the app-based systems, where you have a crowdsourced background check, where you can know information and rider reviews for your driver from previous riders who have been with them before, customers who consistently rate them, just as they do on Yelp. You see the picture in advance. Ultimately, though, I'm glad that we had this discussion because I think it woke us up. It woke us up because the discussion we're having about background checks, we never had for limos at the airport, we never had for town cars at the airport, we never had for the flyaway system, we never had for the courtesy shuttles. We've never had that discussion in this body. I'm glad that the taxi industry rose up and got us to have this conversation, and I'm very glad for the recommendations that we have before us from some of the incredibly good work that Mr. Kocorian has done that will allow us to look at the whole range of transportation options there, as was first identified by Mr. Rue. We need to have a uniform standard. There's no reason that we should have a standard for taxis or a standard for TNCs that's different than for the courtesy shuttles or for anything else there. It also woke us up to this issue because we didn't discuss one word, not one word of conversation about public safety or background checks when we renewed the franchise agreement for the taxi industry just a month ago. Public safety and background checks didn't come up at all. And there are concerns about fingerprinting. You know, the systems are different. I disagree with Mr. Sedia who says that one is better than the other. The National Association of Background Screeners says, "The incomplete information that resides within the FBI fingerprint database should make any legislator question why legislation designed to protect vulnerable populations would place a premium on such a flawed system." It gave me pause. The FBI in 2006 did a whole analysis explaining all the problems with its fingerprint system, saying it shouldn't be the sole source, the sole source for employment background screening, which is why I think we've struck the right note here. We struck the right note in encouraging the PUC to do both types of systems, to be duplicative because you need to do more to protect public safety. We struck the right note by saying at LAX, we should try to move towards, to the extent legally allowable and practicable, to have both systems for all the operators at that airport. That's the right way to go. So I'm glad we've had this discussion. I think we can do both. I just note that there's been a lot of talk about the competing industries, and we've done a lot, I think, to work hard to stand up for the taxi industry. We just extended that franchise agreement. We've directed DOT to do a study and work with the taxi industry to find ways that we can make sure that they can survive through this new competitive environment and that the service they provide in Los Angeles, which is vital, can continue. But by vetoing the NILA, we are actually taking away a level playing field or the opportunity of a level playing field for a form of transportation that a lot of people in Los Angeles are demanding. And I think since we've put in the safeguards and are asking for the belts and suspenders approach, we can feel confident that folks who use either system are safe. So I support the amendments of Mr. Kocorian and the amendments that Mr. Keretz just made that are friendly, ask for approval of those, and would ask that we approve the NILA and reject the veto. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. And I very much appreciate all the thoughtful debate that has happened. I have to respond to a few different things that I've heard, and then we'll hopefully get to the bigger question of the NILA. But, you know, on the ADA issues that were raised, again, not a simple issue. If you read the NILA, the NILA actually imposes a number of different things. TNCs have to show the satisfaction of the executive director, they've implemented disability training courses, and it goes through a whole series of issues regarding the ADA. Every company doing business in LA needs to comply with the ADA, and I don't think it's right to suggest that we're giving TNCs a pass on that in any way. When you talk about safety, safety is a complicated issue. It's not as simple as background check, no background check. You know, and when you talk about these anecdotes about different examples, that always, I like to legislate by data rather than anecdotes. But if we're going to bring up anecdotes, I'll bring one up I heard just yesterday from someone who was telling me about a taxi ride where they had left their purse in the cab. And then they called to find out if they could get their purse back and if, you know, about the cab driver, and they were told by the dispatch that, oh, it wasn't that cab driver, it was one of his partners. One of his partners, he says, because the cab driver only drives during the peak hours and the partner's on the non-peak hours. And so somehow, the system can get abused on either sense, where a taxi driver can have a partner that may be fully licensed or may not be fully licensed. So you can have the same anecdotes happening with taxi cabs as you have with TNCs. They're both problems. We don't want to legislate by anecdotes, but there are anecdotes on both sides that could be very troubling. But when you talk about safety, the other piece, what I like about the TNCs is the new type of safety mechanisms that they're implementing that frankly taxi cabs should do and are starting to do. And that has to do with the real-time feedback. That has to do with the fact that when you get in a TNC, you can press a button and you can have your destination sent to your friend, your mother, your spouse. They'll know where you are, at what time, and where you're going, and whether they need to worry about you. And if something happens, you know where it happened, when it happened. There's an accountability that is there with TNCs that is not there with taxi cabs. There's an accountability that is there with TNCs that is not there with taxicabs. It's not an even playing field. We're asking TNCs under this NILA to pay an extra $4 at the airport that taxicabs don't have to pay, in terms of when they're, not only when they're picking up, but also when they're dropping off. It's not fair, but that's part of, the NILA was made because it's trying to balance competing interests that are apples and oranges. And I think the Airport Commission, we wanted to review their decision, but they did a good job of weighing those issues, of looking at the inequities on both sides, trying to come up with something that would allow consumers the choice that they want, that would regulate out of the chaos. Because right now, make no mistake about it, TNCs are there. It's just unregulated. And they're there, and people are taking shuttle buses to Mr. Bonin's community, to a restaurant or a hotel, getting the TNC there, causing a whole lot of traffic problems. We have a responsibility to try to regulate these things, to make the airport smooth. The biggest issue for the airport and for their NILA is operations. We didn't talk a lot about operations, but they spent a lot of time in developing the NILA on the operations, on the geofence, how the geofence is gonna work, where the staging area is gonna be. All of that, we didn't talk about because frankly, they did a good job of figuring it out. And although it's not quite figured out, what they made very clear was, the TNCs don't get those contracts until they demonstrate the efficacy of the geofence and of the various operational requirements that we're able to impose through a NILA. Without having a NILA, we don't have those operational requirements. So, I'm very pleased that we had a lot of amendments today, but we also had a lot of recommendations in committee that we went through, that were designed to improve access, designed to improve transparency, and were designed to improve safety. And I think all of those, we should be very proud of as a body that we're able to come up with a whole lot of things that will make the process better for everyone, for the cab companies as well. Some of the recommendations are about streamlining taxi services and the regulations that we impose. So I think we're moving in a positive direction. I do think we need to embrace the technology. It's here, it is before us. We need to not just, we can't put our head in the sand. We have to embrace it, we have to regulate it, and we have to move forward in a way that's gonna best serve our community. And that's why, at the moment, I'm asking for an "I" vote on items 2 through 11, as amended through the three different sets of amendments that we have received.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, before we vote on the NILA, I'm gonna identify or not identify, call on the city attorney, and then the city clerk, they need to make some statements prior to the vote.
Just for, thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, the revised majority report that is on file accurately reflects the recommendations consistent with the charter, specifically, recommendations 2, 6, and 7 are requests to law and not instructions.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, before counsel for vote, there's recommendations 2 through 11, as amended by motions 13-D through 13-I.
Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 Is.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now ask that the, I would like to have a vote on Agenda Item 13-B, the minority report requesting a veto of the Airport Commission's action. And I would ask for an "I" vote in, well, I guess the clerk should explain to us what we're gonna vote on.
Yes, Mr. President, first, pursuant to council rules, council should vote on whether to substitute the minority report, which is a recommendation...
Hold your point, Patrice. Sir, you have to sit down. Madam Clerk, continue.
First, council should vote on whether to substitute the minority report, 13-B, which is the recommendation to veto the board's action relative to approving the non-exclusive license agreement covering TNCs servicing LAX. To substitute that recommendation for recommendation number one of the majority report. So the first vote is not on the veto, it's on whether to substitute.
Mr., uh...
That's for an "I" vote.
Mr. Blumenfield, did you wanna?
Well, it's the functional equivalent, so I'm gonna ask for a "no" vote on this item, which is, the item before us is the rejection, although it's whether to substitute, but it's the functional equivalent of the rejection. So if you want to reject the NILA vote, that the BoAC decision, you vote "I." If you want to accept the BoAC decision, you would vote "no." And I'm asking for a "no" vote on this measure.
And Mr. Krikorian's asking for an "I," but Mr. Coretts?
I just wanted to point out, you could be opposed to one or for one, but just provide the professional courtesy for us to actually vote on the item itself. So one could easily vote "I" and then vote "no" on the item, in an extension of professional courtesy. Allowing us to vote on the item certainly would not be out of line.
But then you wouldn't be able to vote for the majority report. If you substitute this, then you don't have the option to vote for the majority report. So you express your support for the majority vote by voting "no." You could vote to substitute and then vote "I" or "yes," but the impact of getting that...
If it doesn't get the vote to substitute, then it fails, Mr. Coretts. So I mean, it's basically what, you know, you're afforded the opportunity, sorry, Bob, to vote the way that you want. So I don't see the need to have two votes on that. But I've been instructed, Mr. Krikorian, you're having some technical...
No, I'm great.
You're good now? Okay, Mr. Blumenfield, sorry.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, again, Mr. Krikorian is asking for an "I" vote, Mr. Blumenfield is asking for a "no" vote. With that, with that, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, with that said, well, if she wants to clarify, I want her. Madam Clerk, clarify.
Mr. President, just for clarification, if the vote to substitute passes and the veto fails, the majority report recommendation number one will be back before counsel.
So, let us, can we remove the speakers on the cue, or are we having technical glitches here? All right, again, Mr. Krikorian wants an "I" vote, Mr. Blumenfield a "no." Can we please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Seven Is, eight Noes.
That, the motion to substitute has failed.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfield.
Okay, so now I would ask for an "I" vote on the majority report to affirm the BoAC decision.
Okay, so, let us, on this, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine Is, six Noes.
Thank you. All right.
So, Mr. President, just for clarification, the majority report, recommendations 1 through 11, as amended by motions 13-D through I, have passed.
Okay, then, what's before this body at this time?
At this time, council has motions for posted and referral.
They are posted and referred. Mr. City Attorney?
And just one more clarification about the majority report on file. It states that it is to concur with and thereby not veto the board's July 16, 2015, action.
Okay, so now, again, announcements? Everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Everybody in the council chambers, please rise. Mr. Weezer. Shh, if we could please have quiet.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm not sure, Mr. President, if you just want to allow those who want to leave at this time to leave.
Well, you know what, I'll do that.
Have some quietness.
Yes, I agree. Good recommendation.
Respect for those who are adjourning.
If you could please, if you're, please be quiet, we need to adjourn, and we want to do it, be respectful.
Thank you.
So I don't know your name in the back. You don't want me to find out what your name is, I call on you personally to be quiet. Shh. Hey, man, would you be quiet for two minutes? All right, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Abdo Youssef Saab, a man of integrity and an outstanding community leader who passed away on July 23, 2015. Mr. Saab was born in Hamana, Lebanon on August 15, 1945, and was educated in Jesuit schools in Lebanon, studied abroad in France, and received his civil engineer degree. Mr. Saab came to Los Angeles in the early 1970s, where he met a wonderful woman named Lourdes, a community liaison for the Los Angeles mayor's office. They soon fell in love and were married. They lived and raised two daughters, Leanne and Jessica, in La Cañada Fintech, before they all moved to Los Angeles. Mr. Saab began a long and remarkable career as a businessman, ascending quickly to the position of Vice President of Downtown LA Motors. He then opened several businesses, including a travel agency and a consulting firm. Abdo was also active in the local law enforcement and political communities. A charismatic man, Abdo's presence was felt wherever he went. He loved to make people laugh, and his unique sense of humor made a positive lasting impression on everyone he met. Value in integrity and work, politics and life, Mr. Saab treated everyone equally and with respect and as a friend. He cared deeply about civil liberties and justice. He enjoyed helping people and was a dependable friend in hard times. Deeply patriotic, Abdo loved Lebanon, his country of origin, and America, his adopted home. A devoted family man, Abdo is survived by his loving wife, Lourdes, daughters Leanne and Jessica Saab, brother George, and sisters Georgette, Lila, Ida, and May. Abdo was an irreplaceable part of our community, and he will be sorely missed by his family and friends and all those lives he touched. A trusted friend and a man of impeccable character, I ask all members to join me in remembering Abdo Youssef Saab. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can ask people in the back to please exit council chambers, I have members of the families that I'm adjourning in memory of, and it's rude to continue to talk while we're doing adjourning motions. Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Antonia Álvarez. Mrs. Álvarez passed away at the age of 101 on Wednesday, August 5, of 2015. Antonia was born on April 20, 1914, in Zacatecas, Mexico. She spent part of her childhood working in the farming fields in Arizona and eventually settled in Arlita, California. Antonia was not able to achieve an education past fourth grade due to financial constraints. However, she was wise and knowledgeable on the idea that higher education would be a path to upward mobility for all her children. She was an active member of her community, participated in outreach for the construction of Mary Makula Church in Pacoima, and also volunteered her spare time at Santa Rosa Immigration Center, helping others achieve their goals and to becoming U.S. citizens. Antonia also volunteered at MENT, a nonprofit program that helps low-income families with her husband, Max Álvarez. She will be remembered as a kind, caring, and loving woman. She will be dearly missed, and she's survived by her daughters Irene Galván, Martha Clegg, Rosalie Herrera, and her beautiful grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And we have Irene here, who is a retired librarian from Lakeview Terrace Library, and her son, Esteban Galvez, who I had a pleasure of working with many years ago, who is awaiting his bar results from Stanford Law School. So, my condolences, and may we adjourn in her memory. I have a second adjourning motion, Mr. President.
Before that, we wish you well on your results.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of Ifraín C. Fuentes Hurtado and his daughter Luz Yanet C. Fuentes. What was supposed to be a nice Sunday afternoon outing with the family turned into a tragedy when around 12:45 PM, Ifraín lost control of his SUV as he was entering the on-ramp on the 405 Freeway North at Sherman Way in Van Nuys. His vehicle was struck by a passing semi-truck, injuring his wife, Juana C. Fuentes, and his two infant children, a four-year-old girl and a one-year-old boy. Ifraín and his six-year-old daughter Luz unfortunately lost their lives. The cause of the accident has not been determined. They are survived by Ifraín's wife, Juana C. Fuentes, and his two infant children. Colleagues, I ask that you keep them in their prayers, and may the family find the courage to be able to survive these two tragic losses. May they rest in peace.
Still looking to my right, I don't see any more adjournings. On that side, I go to my left, no adjournings. Members, this meeting is adjourned.